It's so funny, I couldn't find the gavel, but it was hiding behind the computer. Welcome to the Board of Education, September 8th, 2025, special called meeting for the purpose of our annual board reorganization. This meeting is now called to order. Are there any requested changes to the agenda?
Can you approve?
Okay, motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Christie, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, Mr. Dupler, since this is a special meeting to reorganize, can you kind of go over how we will run this meeting? Some of the rules about how to nominate, second, all that?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just the basics. Board members, you will nominate someone. That, then that person must be seconded. If, you'll, you'll start with the board chair. And once, once the floor has been open and all nominations have been received, the floor will then be closed. You all will then be able to vote on, on, if there's just one, I mean, you could ask by acclamation. But if there's more than one, you'll vote on the nominees. The nominees will be given a chance to say a few words before the vote. Same thing for vice chair. That's it.
Yep, sounds good. Yeah, and if there's any questions throughout the process, we can walk through those. All right, with that, I will open it up to nominations for a chair. Lauren?
I would like to nominate Christie Christie for chair.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second for that? We just have a second. Okay. All right, any other nominations, Ms. Bike?
I would like to nominate Reverend Butler, please.
All right.
A second.
Okay. So we have two nominations, Christie Christie and Reverend Butler, both are seconded. Any other nominations? Ms. Coveney? Oh, oh, sorry, I thought you had something to say, Ms. Coveney, I apologize. Kat, did you have anything else, or did you just accidentally leave your line on? Okay. All right, does any other nomination, nominees have anything to say? Okay, I just wanted to give you all the chance. All right, Ms. Coveney.
Dr. Butler? So state the last name of the person that you're voting for.
Yes, I apologize. Yeah, we are stating who we are voting for by name.
Ms. Templeton? Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Butler.
Ms. Bike? Ms. Morgan? Mr. Triplet? Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
Christie.
That's four votes for Dr. Butler and five votes for Ms. Christie.
All right, congratulations, Ms. Christie, will be our new board chair. Okay. We will now open the floor up for nominations for vice chair. Ms. Fontana Ridley?
I'd like to nominate Kat Bike for vice chair.
I'll second.
All right. Second by Ms. Templeton. Ms. Christie?
I would like to nominate Travis Wright for vice chair.
All right. Any other nominations for vice chair? Does anybody have anything to say, any of her nominees? I think that's a new one for me. All right, Ms. Coveney?
Dr. Butler? Ms. Templeton? Ms. Fontana Ridley? Ms. Bike? Ms. Morgan? Mr. Triplet? Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie? Ms. Henderson?
Wright.
That's four votes for Ms. Bike and five votes for Mr. Wright.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Wright, on being our new vice chair. All right. And then you will resume your duties on Thursday at that meeting. And I just want to thank everybody for the last two years. It's been great being chair. I appreciate the opportunity and I'm excited for the next year coming up. And with that, we are adjourned and we will resume at 5:00 PM with our workshop meeting.
Welcome to the Board of Education, September 8, 2025 work session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Wright. We just have a few dates to remember, Board members. Wednesday, September 17th is Constitution Day and also a half day for our students. I know my kids are excited about having that half day. A policy review meeting is scheduled for Friday, September 26th at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. And also due to fall break, which is October 6th through the 10th, next month's board work session will be held on Monday, September 29th with the regular, I know that is so strange, with the regular session to follow on Thursday, October 2nd. So that's a little, little different this month. Are there any other requested changes, or are there any requested changes to this agenda? Motion, Madam Christie. Second, Madam Mr. Triplet. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right. Dr. Rice, do you have a superintendent's report?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. School started just over a month ago. Isn't that crazy? Like, we keep thinking, I keep saying the older I get, I think the faster time goes, but definitely. It's only been, it's been, it's been a great few weeks that we've had so far. I've had the privilege of visiting eight schools in this time, and I can certainly say that school is in full swing. It also feels different. We've talked about this lots of times, too. It feels very different to me than it has in past years. I can remember being at Bell Morris on the third day, and it was like, everybody was in their right places, all the, the people who were getting the kids out of the cars. And I remember talking to two of the teachers, and I was like, it feels like we're three weeks in. And they're like, no, we think so, too. So something about the start of this year really, really made a difference. So I think that we're seeing a real focus on helping all of our students start strong, and we're seeing that across the schools we've been at. So expectations are very clear, supports are in place, and every classroom feels purposeful. Our best strategy for improving outcomes for students, I've said this once and will continue to say it, is hire, is a high-qualified educator in every classroom, and our work on retention recruitment is paying off. I think that's really the main reason why things have been so smooth, is people haven't had to retrain their staff this year. I mean, most people had two or three openings if they had any, so that makes a big difference. Our best, okay, this year, we opened school with only seven certified vacancies out of roughly 4,700 teachers. That's a 91% increase over, or decrease over two years ago from where we were. We've also made real progress on stability across schools. Eighty-three of our 91 schools were fully staffed on day one, and that's more than 90% of our schools compared to less than half of those schools just two years ago. In short, vacancies are down, retention is on the rise, and we're building a stronger, more stable workforce that's better positioned to serve our students. These results are a testament to Jennifer Hemelgarn and her Business and Talent Division, who's worked extremely hard. I can remember having a conversation, we had, we had six last year, and I can remember talking to Alex Mosman, who's our Director of Talent and Acquisition, and he said, we had six this year. And I said, well, great, were we lucky, or is there, can you do it again? And he said, oh, we can do it again. And they did, so two years in a row. So that tells us we've kind of got a system to be able to make that happen now. The staffing stability is showing where, showing up where it matters most in our student outcomes. At a recent press conference, we celebrated a growth of our students and launched the next phase of choice and innovation across the district. As you know, each year, the Tennessee Department of Education releases T-VOS results, which measure how much students have grown compared to their, their academic peers across the state, whether that student's currently at expectations, below expectations, or exceeding expectations. This year, Knox County earned a Level 5, the highest possible rating, in every tested subject, as well as a Level 5 in its composite score. This is the first time we've reached this milestone in more than a decade. I think 2012, 13 was the last year we did this. I'm incredibly proud of our students and our staff. Our schools performed strongly as well. Seventy-nine percent of our schools earned a T-VOS composite of a 3, 4, or 5. So if you're not used to T-VOS, a Level 3 means a year's worth of growth for the students in that building. So fours and fives are only better than that, right? So 79% of our schools earned a T-VOS score of 3, 4, or 5, with nearly half at a Level 4 or 5. So that's, takes a lot of work. I know you guys have been around for a while to see that, too, to make that happen. This matters because behind every number is a student. Every Level 3, 4, and 5 growth and every gain and achievement means more students are ready for life after graduation. It also reflects consistent, effective work by teachers, staff, and leaders. One example we're spotlighting is Austin East Magnet High School, led by Dr. Rob Spees. In 2022 and '23, AE earned a Level 1 composite for their growth. Last year, they jumped to a Level 3, and this year, they reached Level 5 alongside a double-digit gain in several of their subject areas. I think these were the highest achievement scores they've had since 2017. So it was great to be there for the press conference. I know some of you were there as well, to be able to hear Dr. Spees kind of talk about that and give his staff the credit for the work they've done. So this momentum is not just happening there, but it's really happening across the entire district. We ended last year with the adoption of the 2030 Strategic Plan, a five-year roadmap built with input from students, families, educators, and the community. And less than six months later, we've kicked off our first major initiative from that plan, innovative schools, and I want to give my team credit for that. Sometimes it's easy to get the work done and pass a strategic plan, and it sits on the shelf for a year or two, and then you go, wait, what did we say we were going to do? So the fact that six months in, we've already lifted a major initiative is good. We've already seen innovative schools, what they can do in schools like Ellen and STEM Academy and our Career Magnet Academy, and families across the district are eager for more choices. We're now asking community members across all five regions which models they want the most. We launched a district-wide survey available on our website and sent to our families and staff via Parent Square, seeking input on options such as either limiting or expanding technology use in the classroom, learning through things like debate, an outdoor learning or arts-integrated learning environment, and the language immersion. That feedback will help guide where and how we expand innovative programming across the district, including work already underway for our new K-8 school on the former Rule High School site serving Mechanicsville, Lonsdale, and Beaumont. Later this fall, we'll be re-engaging in families in those areas through a series of in-person community meetings to help identify which innovative programming options are of most interest to the school. Some of you remember, we've already had one round of that on the initial, but we will come back this fall because we'll soon be in those decision-makings for architecture design and those sorts of things. I truly believe this is the start of something special for Knox County schools. Our traditional schools are thriving, and our data show it. That's the, the perfect time for us now to start looking at some innovative options that can come alongside those traditional schools. We intend to be the first choice for families and the best choice for students, not just in Knox County, but across the region. We're already well on our way to making that a reality, and the initiatives like innovative schools will be instrumental in taking us the rest of the way. One last thing before I close, we kicked off our 37th Annual Coupon Book Campaign on September the 4th. The campaign runs through September 24th, and this year's book features many returning favorites plus nearly 50 new vendors and some great new prizes. This is our largest and longest-running fundraising campaign to support students, teachers, and schools, and I know it'll be another successful year. And with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm excited for this year and the future of our schools. All right, we will dive right into our agenda. So we'll start with 7C. One or two? I do want to say for number one, if you haven't been to the Nutrition Food Show, it really is, it really is really a cool thing. I know I tell kids to go to when they want to talk about the lunch items that are offered. I'm like, you need to go to the food show. It's really cool. All right, moving on then. Three or four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Nine or 10? Eleven or 12? Thirteen or 14? Fifteen or 16? Seventeen or 18? Nineteen or 20? Twenty-one or 22? Twenty-three or 24? Twenty-five? Twenty-six or 27? Twenty-eight or 29? Moving on then to board policies. 8A or B? C or D? E? All right. Then moving on to grants. A or B? C? D? Or E? F or G? H or I? All right, contracts. A? Then moving on to regular agenda items. A or B? C or D? Oh my goodness, this may be a record, y'all. All right, moving on to public forum then, and I don't think we have anybody signed up. All right, then we will move on then to board forum. Reverend Butler? Ms. Templeton? I know.
What is even happening?
I know. Usually have more time to think about board forums. So I have been to about six schools so far, so I'm not quite as good with my time as Dr. Rice, but I'm working on it. There will be a month that I will make it the same number that you do. There will be at some time. But I've been to six and have been so impressed with the work that's being done. I've hit elementary schools this month, and there are new gardens going in that are just being embraced by students, and new murals that I have seen, and partnerships with organizations. NSkip has a phenomenal partnership coming up to do a parade with cattywampus. If you are familiar with cattywampus, it's giant puppets. So these kids have been working on these puppets, and they're going to be parading down NSkip. It's going to be fantastic. It's later on in September. I should know the date. I don't, I'll look it up, and I'll send it to you. Because they are, they're huge, and they're just fun, and it's community building, and it's a wonderful, beautiful Because they are, they're huge, and they're just fun, and it's community building, and it's a wonderful, beautiful thing. So thank you to all the hard-working teachers and the principals who lead them. It's really a privilege to see the really good work that's being done, so thank you.
That's cool. Thank you. Ms. Fontana Ridley?
I just want to give a shout-out to my fellow District 3 County Commissioner, Gina Oster, for stepping up in every way that she can and helping bring the deal together with the new turf and playground area. It was kind of through her connections that they were able to get that done. So I really appreciate the work that Gina's done on that.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Triplet. Ms. Bike. Ms. Morgan.
Mr. Wright.
Ms. Christie.
Yes, I would just like to thank you and Mr. Triplet. Board organization, reorganization can sometimes be awkward, and, but, you know, it, it is a, a job at times and often a thankless one. So thank you both for serving in that capacity for the last year.
I appreciate that. And I want to congratulate, we did have our reorg meeting before this, and I want to congratulate Ms. Christie, who will be our new board chair, and Mr. Wright, who will be our new vice chair. I've loved this role over the past two years, and so I just appreciate the opportunity. It's been a pleasure to serve, and I'm excited for the next year and to watch you guys lead our board. So with that, we are adjourned. Oh my goodness.